Yeah, I'd like to read on behalf of the chairman the following statement. This meeting is being forwarded if any other persons present are doing so, doing the same. You must notify the chairperson at this time. In accordance with Mass General Law thirty A SS two twenty G. No person shall address a meeting of a public body without permission of the chair. And all persons shall, at the request of the chair, be silent. No person shall disrupt the proceedings of a meeting of a public body. If after a clear warning from the chair, a person continues to disrupt the proceedings. The chair may order the person to withdraw from the meeting. And if the person does not withdraw, the chair may authorize a constable or other officer to remove the person from the meeting. All the order of public hearing for application of Stephanie Du Close for property.
There's a different item at six fifteen on the agenda.
Request for extension of obtaining a building five Bird Street.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I can quickly just say what the situation is. And we have Howard Goldberg, realtor for Purple Heart Homes virtually here to answer any questions you may have about this request. But the the structure at Five Bird Street burned down. And they want to rebuild it and their their request and in zoning ordinance, you have a year to do something to start building that. Otherwise, you've got to make a request to the zoning board of appeals. And so that's what they're doing. They're making a request for an extension of one year, I believe it is. Yes. So that they can have enough time to complete this home within the timeframe once you granted the extension, if you do. If the board has any questions, Howard is here, Mr. Goldberg's here to answer any questions you may have.
Maybe he should speak to it.
Can you give a brief explanation of the request, Mr. Goldberg?
Yes, thank you. Purple Heart Homes is negotiating with a couple of people that want to buy and build a single family home that meets all the code requirements and footprint requirements for this property. Unfortunately, it takes time to plan and build and get permits. And that the demo was done in November. And here it is already summer. And if any of you've talked to builders and architects, it takes a lot of time to get to the stage of permits and construction. So all we're asking for is to do everything in compliance, but have enough time to get it done.
Okay, any questions? Any questions from the rest of the board?
I do have a question. Can you, Eric, can you help clarify for me? So, um. The building permit is through November first. Is that construction would be completed by November first of twenty twenty five or done by November first, twenty twenty five?
It has to be obtained, the building permit within that timeframe. But not construction complete.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, so Jim, you were a couple of minutes late. So sitting on the panel are Eric Green, you'll be sitting on this panel.
So Debbie Jill.
Mark Maroney.
Jim Webb.
Peter Roseman.
Eric Green.
No, Jim, you got here a couple of minutes late, so you won't be voting on this. All right, Eric Green's on the panel. Okay, does the does the board have any more questions of the applicant?
I do not.
Motion to grant a request for a purple. Purple heart, I don't see that.
Do we need to open up for public comment?
Yes.
Sorry, sorry, this is not a public hearing.
Oh, it's not?
Request that the board itself makes a decision. A simple majority of the board approves the request.
Thank you for clarification.
Thanks, Eric.
I used to do it the other way.
Okay, Peter, go ahead and make the motion, please.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to grant the request for an extension of obtain a building permit five virgin from purple. Purple Heart Homes. Second.
I'd like to add a condition of, well, if they don't do it by November first, I have to come back automatically.
Automatically.
So this is November first, two thousand twenty four, correct? That's the extension date?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The extension's to twenty twenty five.
Oh, it is.
November first, twenty twenty five. I thought you said twenty twenty four.
Okay, let's make it so. So we're voting to extend the building, the the date for initiating for securing a building permit to November first, two thousand twenty five. If it's not secured by then, then the applicant needs to come back to the board. Okay, seeing no more discussion, all in favor, say aye. That are on the panel, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show that the panel unanimously voted yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you. You're welcome.
I'm still putting all the documents.
There was a ton of them.
There were. All last. Stretch a little bit. We don't have any minutes to prove this time, correct?
It's on the agenda, but I just finished them today, so it'll be on next.
Next one, correct.
Twenty five pages or so.
Twenty pages?
Right.
Twenty five or twenty years. Huge. Longest minutes I've ever got.
Yeah. Um.
Peter, please open the hearing.
Six thirty, application Stephanie Du Close for property located in six Arch Street assessors tax map sixty four lot. Which is located in the central commercial CC zoning listed for appeal of the building permit issued by Mark Snow. Spector of Building State in March twenty six, two thousand twenty one.
Please invite the applicant to speak.
It is set down.
Good evening, Stephanie Du Close. I'm a person of interest and have legal standing.
Can you tell us your address, please?
One sixty six Chapman Street, Greenfield, Mass, parcel number zero nine, that's zero six nine four two.
Thank you.
My deed number is zero four seven zero nine on page forty. The tax map is zero six nine, and I'm in an RA zone.
Thank you.
I also would like to enter that I have a residential severe risk flood factor of a seven over ten in my area. And that can be obtained on riskfactor.com. Would also like to make a correction to the original application for my appeal. On the app, at the second page, it says that the application fee was waived. In fact, it was not waived because the integrity of the mayor was questioned as to whether or not she could waive it for an indigent Title Four recipient. So I paid a hundred and fifty dollars in cash to be for the appeal. And the costs associated with sending certified mail to parties of interest at a cost of eight dollars and I believe it's at sixty nine, it says sixty nine cents on this. One that I received from fifteen arch LLC. I believe the email I had received from Eric said eight dollars and ninety six cents, but it could just have been an error.
Okay, noted, thank you.
I have received documents from the city attorney that are requiring response responses to. I received those within twenty four hours. So I would ask for an extension of some time to be able to submit answers I might not be able to present tonight with the evidence that supports that. Unless, David, Chair, you would like so eloquently to argue powers for me as I haven't been able to prepare it as well as I would like to.
All right.
So you would like me to speak to the application? Or what more specifically would the city like to hear from me?
So maybe this is a good time to explain to people listening, people in the audience, people listening. This, our job tonight is to determine whether or not CSO properly applied for a building permit or not. It, we, we determine zoning issues only. So it would, so for for you to give us relevant information, Stephanie, it would be why you think that CSO needs to go for a special permit? That's the first conversation. You were given the materials, yes, yesterday to help you focus. But I would assume when you filed the appeal several weeks ago that you must have had in your mind some legal basis for telling the zoning board why CSO needs to go for a special permit. So we would be very happy to hear from you on that issue. Thank you.
So my nature of the appeal, I believe that the building permit was issued with disregard to the conditions that I had publicly stated at the site approval plan meeting on January fourth, where I had verbally outspoken and had my partner subsequently removed by the police department by the acting chair of the board at the time, Charles Kinney. Because George, I don't know how to pronounce his last name, it starts with a T, had to recuse himself because he was an employee of CSO. I believe that the site plan approval was a significant change of use. The principal uses in that six arch street are, well, what it says is it's office, but and retail. What they're proposing is occupancy. It's questionable as to whether or not it's been debatable, but but because I know that hearsay is actually allowed at this meeting, that they have intention to make it permanent occupancy. And will come and appeal to this board for another occupancy change of use to use it as a respite.
Okay, go ahead.
Would you like me to further expand?
Yes, well, the question before us, the question before us is this. CSO came before the city and said that because they're an educational nonprofit, they are entitled to protection under forty eight, section three, which means that the zoning, the zoning bylaws with respect to their use around education, which would be this homeless shelter, don't apply to them. Secondly, there's a section in the central commercial code seven point one oh that says that as a matter of right, properties can have residential use on the second floor and commercial use on the first floor. So it seems to me on the face of their application that they have made, they've taken positions and and made a proposed, taken a position that seems correct under the law. I'm not saying that we're going to decide that to be the case. So can you tell us, for example, under the Dover, so-called Dover amendment? I hate to be legally specific, but there's nothing else I could call it. That the Dover amendment basically says that as an educational charity, as long as they're serving their educational purpose at the site, even though zoning might reach, might call for a special permit as you are asking for residential use, they are exempt from that requirement because of their status as a nonprofit and because of what they're actually doing there. Now, now we're going to question them about what they're doing there. So they're going to have to explain to us why they are exempt. But in the meantime, I know that you have a lot of issues around drainage and those kinds of things. And that's fine, and we can get to that as a second part of the discussion. But right now before us, what I'd like you to to speak to in any way that you can. You don't have to be, you don't have to be legalese about it. But if you have anything in the zoning code or in state law or in case law that you could point out to us, that would say that either they're not allowed to go there because they don't qualify under the Dover amendment or under section seven point one. If you could read into those sections and give us language that you think would.
May I add a section I also believe that they violate?
Sure, please do.
Massachusetts General Law forty A subsection three, no zoning, zoning ordinance or bylaw shall exempt land or structures from flood plain wetlands regulations that were established pursuant to that.
So are you saying that you're presenting, you're, you're, you're presenting, you're going to present us with evidence that the one arch place is in a flood zone?
Yes, the, the, according to the FER COG, over Green River Obelé corridor, we are considered a high risk flood prone area that any of the work that they have done thus far in, if trenching in November, December, I have pictures of, that they first needed to contact conservation to ensure the protection and the health and safety of our groundwater and our infrastructure and any potential positive fact, positive actions after that. As, as I have suffered damages because of that particular issue. And I don't, I, I want to be very careful because I don't want to push it into executive session. So, um.
So you're saying that, that.
I was saying.
Qualifies under a flood. Now, you, as you're using that term, a flood zone usually is a vegetative area that's unimproved that is then asked to be improved. And so the Conservation Commission has to make a study and determine whether or not that land can be touched. In this case, I, I could be wrong and you could help the board understand better. But in this case, the building is already built. And the changes that are going to occur are inside the structure. So you're going to take space that I assume is commercial. And maybe you'll leave some walls, move some walls, and then you're going to convert it into a residential space. So I don't see how the land itself is impacted in the flood zone way. But you may have, maybe what you mean is that the use of the premises for residential purposes might change some of the dynamics of things, systems that exist around you, such as rain runoff or sewer coming out of the building. Are those the kinds of things that you're suggesting?
Yes, I am.
Changed?
Yes, and in the building.
Can you be specific instead? I, I hear the general tone of your, of what you're saying. And, and I, I want to, I want to know what you're saying. I want to understand what you're saying. But, but just to make an allegation that something has changed, it's difficult for us. We, we have a large responsibility here. We need more information. We need to know what exactly you think is going on and be more, be as specific as possible, please. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'll start with the actual site plan. Second floor plan, which is actually incomplete. It starts at five, but I actually happen to know what's beyond this. And that is Bridge Primary Care, which is a medical facility. Which is, according to the, to all public records, no special permit had ever been applied for the medical facilities that are currently or, or what the definition of medical facility, according to the law, would have required special permit for use in the commercial, central commercial district.
Is that what's before us, their leases, or just how, how is that relevant to this?
It is relevant to the shared space according to the building permit code that the op or the zoning code, the office space or the quote unquote office space can't be shared on that same space. It's, I, I contest that's even an office. It's not an office. It's a, a patient care facility that was never, had never gone through permits, which kind of fruit of the poison tree here. They haven't applied for any of the special permits that are actually in that building. Clean slate, a sub boxing clinic, which would also fall under medical clinic, is also operating there. All of it ties back into parking, which I'll get to later.
So are you saying, are you saying that the space is being shared with this physician's office?
Yes, on the second floor.
So they're both in the same space, the medical office and the homeless.
On the second floor, if, if they'd like to.
Are they in the same physical space or just on the same floor?
Same floor. I, I, it, it's absent from the actual plan, the extension of the building. So I, all I see here, where it starts from five and goes to, it looks like sixteen. I would imagine there's more to the building than where it starts at five.
Continue, please.
On the second floor level, they are proposing multiple bathrooms and a kitchen where the current use is telecom room, staff lounge, and it's very hard to distinguish what any of that little scribble stuff is. But doesn't look like there's much there. So what they're proposing is putting in, it looks like one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight toilets, some showers, some laundry, a kitchen. And so I'll contend that if this allowed to go in, it will do more damage to the current infrastructure than we already have in that area. That are, we cannot sustain that as a city. But the damage that they already have done has impacted the city. And that are, and we don't have the money to fix the problems that they are causing. And last two weekends ago or last weekend, there was a sewage backup. The orientation of that sewage backup, I heard, came from that building and then crossed over to five arch street. Then to the collapse of the sinkhole and sewer breakage, subsequently backing up into the four homes that are most adjacent to arch.
Okay. Sorry to hear that.
Yeah.
And how do you know, how do you know it originates from that building?
I saw it. And I talked to the woman who was working in the building who told me. I, I, I live across the street.
Okay.
So, uh. Do you have any questions regarding that anymore that, or should I move on to the parking issue?
It sounds like what you're saying is that the increase in the facilities having toilets, showers, laundry, kitchen is going to increase some materially, the use of the infrastructure around sewer especially. And as a, as, as a, as evidence of that, just last week, there was a sewer backup that you believe was caused by the building.
Yes.
Okay, please continue.
I have a question. This was before site plan review. During that process, did the city look at post design in terms of infrastructure? I would assume that would have taken place.
I, I would assume that too, because it's very clear on what's expected during the site plan review in our code. And in our code, I'm, I, maybe for public, I will read. The construction alteration of any building structure premise that require a permit that is applicable, and I believe the permit that was applicable would have been in R four on the application. That is applicable, and I believe the permit that was applicable would have been in R four on the application. The inspector of buildings shall not issue a permit for the construction alteration or use. Of any building, structure or premises in violation of any provision of this ordinance.
Yes, a question. Are you suggesting that there's a violation there?
Yeah, uh, yeah.
I mean, again, I would assume it's like, there was an engineering process that. This was reviewed post, um, they reviewed it. I would assume sign off on it as being satisfactory code compliant. What I, what you're suggesting that is.
It's not. That's what I.
I, I want basis though.
That I, that I don't believe that it's code compliant?
Well, I mean, he can make this thing, but there's got to be a rationale for saying it's not compliant.
Because the activities are having in a flood zone without consideration of having a special permit. It didn't have the public hearing that I had requested. In, I had spoken in public at the, at the site plan approval. That I wanted a public hearing on this matter because the infrastructure couldn't sustain even the trenching at the time. I was then denied that public hearing. They said that I didn't need it in a timely manner. I have evidence to the contrary. I had suggested that there were been building code violations and that the trenching permits that were issued prior. Were off, were, were not in, in conjunction with the conservation. Parameters of being in that flood zone. They trenched in between the prohibited timeframes of November and April.
Who's doing trenching?
The J C, a subcontractor for CSO.
So this, this was done prior to what?
Prior to the site of grant plan approval. Um, they had contacted in, I guess, the application process. The fire chief. Um, to get, you know, an inspection about the, um, the sprinkler system. And for the use of now occupancy, they would have to upgrade. That sprinkler system to be able to comply with the law, with the law. They subsequently were issued a permit for trenching. They conducted the trenching. I have several pictures I could submit later on into, in, in the timeframes and the, I was out there every day. They didn't have soil erosion control. They didn't mitigate. They didn't do, they were draining their, uh, excess water into our sewer systems. And so I wanted to be able to be heard that they had already been issued a permit that I thought that they should be enforced upon. Because when I called the fire chief after the trenching permit. Was issued and they started, all I could smell was oil and toxins in the air. And I said, this is a significant concern, given that six Arch Street in nineteen seventy six was an auto body shop that. Was subsequently, there was a murder and. That was, that predates the Wetlands Act. So all of that stuff was grandfathered in. But during the, during the issuance of the trenching permit, they had connected, connected to the city supply. Trenched during the off time was brought in truckloads of soil. And did not mitigate properly. So my.
I mean, I, I, I hear you saying that, that. Permit was pulled. I'm assuming there was oversight that process.
So, I, I mean. We could probably defer the questions to Eric Turog and Mark Snow as to what processes they followed because. I have the zoning code process. I have the zoning board appeal process. I have. All of what should be in the central commercial district and everything that should be required to have a special permit. They believe they're exempt under the code. I believe that no one is exempt under the Wetlands Act.
I understand, but I'm trying to understand how we're going from the permit for. This renovation to all the other activity that's brought on. Prior to this state of place.
Prior to which?
What? There was some reconstruction work, at least infrastructure work was what you're saying.
Yes, to install a six inch, um, pipe that connected to, to do the water, uh, fire sprinkler system.
How was that work associated with, with being proposed here?
Yes, yes. I'm sorry, he's my partner.
Well, I'm just trying to be.
Yes, no, it, it, it was in conjunction. I, I have the building report, an entire building report. All of what I have here is available through public records requests, except for the pictures. That I have during the entire timeframe.
Stephanie, uh, I have a question for you.
Yes.
So you, you, you're talking about. You keep mentioning about special permit and hearings and things of that nature. I understand. I think I understand what you're saying, but. Let's assume this, let's assume that. As a matter of law. CSO is allowed to go in there as a matter of right. And so therefore they didn't require going before us, for example, for a special permit. But they did go before the planning board for a hearing on the site plan review. When you, when that hearing occurred, did you go and make the same? Uh, have the same discussion with the planning board that you're having with us tonight?
I tried to, yes, and I have several emails I had sent to the city and to, uh, Eric Torog. To yourself, David Singer, to the conservation commission, to the Mass D E P. To Massachusetts Department of Transportation, the railroad. Um, who is not here, so I, I will assume that either they have no comment or they have not been notified. As their right of way is being encroached upon, uh, for parking for the current use. As is my backyard. I believe that this, that the site plan, that they didn't go through the proper process. If you had walked. The property, you could visibly have seen that there were problems with the infrastructure. As you can go on the city website and see how many times in that one general area, we have been shut down for water main breaks. Uh, water hammers that have, uh, uh, you know, subsequently ended up down, down in, uh, the Conway. Allen Street or the Allen Street Bridge. The sewer collapse, the. Uh, impassibility of Arch on multiple occasions because of the water flooding issues. And I had even brought it up to. The city that I had concerns regarding the current water infrastructure. That please don't do anymore because things are happening here that are all tied in to when they originally trenched. So I had spoken to the chief of police regarding the, um. Uh, reaching out and saying, what the heck is happening in my backyard? I got people. Paving in my backyard. I've got them painting stripes in my backyard. I. I didn't get any notice that we had a site plan approval hearing until I had made an objection and saying, I never got any notice. And then, then it got pushed off to a January fourth. Two thousand and four meeting because I started making my requests to be heard back in October of twenty twenty three. And there probably are documents going far before that as well. That I said, there, there are significant problems. We flood over here. You cannot do this. And still, I don't know why he would, he would not consider. The fact that I, that I had true concern for my neighborhood. And that this wasn't about what their project proposal was. It was, if you keep doing this, it's going to cost the city money and we don't have the money. To fix everything all at once. And so it was creating a hardship. Unduly borne by the citizens in the city of Greenfield that is been caused by them. So every response that's been out there prior, I mean, after the trenching. We've had water problem after water problem. That's the cost to the taxpayers and the citizens of Greenfield. And, and we are continually borrowing the cost of all of what is happening in Greenfield, whether that be through. Uh, public safety concerns. Uh, infrastructure and water concerns, traffic concerns, parking concerns, all of it, and we don't have any money. And I was trying to prevent this city from having to be either enjoined in something because I'm. Screaming through the rooftops, hey, please don't do this in this area. No one's ever built anything in this area for occupancy. In that building, ever. It could never sustain. The, the last few owners that I've had some property disputes with. They said, oh, we were screwed. They told us we could do, we can't do it here. We can't do anything here. So to exempt them because they call themselves an educational facility, which to me, I'd like to see a curriculum. I'd like to know their teachers, their success rate, their graduation rate, anything that would qualify them as they think they're a school. Any of that, that would be nice. I said, cause I don't think a temporary homeless shelter, and I don't think a respite center, which is what the proposed. Permit solution is there is either of those. I mean, it, it wouldn't even fit in six Arch Street. And if you go back to November, there wasn't anything, no activity happening there for years. It was an abandonment of that property. They had done nothing. And then all of a sudden, when I started asking questions and I started pulling building permits and started challenging the site approval plan. Then they started putting all these decorations and having someone sit there for twenty four hours. Uh, it, it's, it's all a pony show. It, they have not done it and, and they didn't do it with the Lunt Silversmith property either. And look where we are with that one now. They, they are going to come and say they have no other options. That's what they're going to testify. We have no other options. We can't put them anywhere else. Well, they have B H M. Maybe they should clean up that mess first. On five Doorwood or maybe two ninety eight. The Hope Center, they, they, we have empty beds there. If they really needed to start their construction project and not decimate. My neighborhood, my property valuation and encroach upon my property because they currently do not even meet the needs of parking. For the people that they leased their property to, which is also in violation. Cause I would categorize that whole thing as a medical facility at this point with pharmacies and doctors offices and Sherwin Williams and all kinds of retail. But that's a lot of traffic impact and a lot of infrastructure and not to mention the traffic on Chapman Street. It's absolutely insane. There's no safety considerations for the poorest and low income people down in that neighborhood. See the room? Most of my neighbors are renters with absentee landlords who let people build structures all around. Without regard to our zoning ordinance or our building permit and things are just getting. They're, well, we can go through. Permits are getting closed and no inspections are happening. So if you're asking me if the process is being followed, I don't think it's being followed at all.
Stephanie, um, you mentioned parking, um. In that district, the parking is pretty liberal. You don't really need parking spaces, uh, for the uses. Um, but can you speak, what specifically is going on there with parking? I, I can't, I, I'm trying to visualize how a homeless shelter. Is going to dramatically increase, uh, car traffic.
That are in there that aren't.
Would you like to come up?
Yeah.
This is my partner. He lives at one sixty six Chapman Street.
I don't know how many times we can't reiterate the fact that it's the businesses that are.
Brian, Andrew Neiman.
Ryan. But name. One sixty six Chapman Street.
Thank you. And what, what is it that you want to, you're going to answer that question?
The parking, I've, I've been dealing with the parking issue for the last three days. Um. Somehow. Five Arch Street thinks they own my backyard and now is renting out the property. Because they already don't have enough parking for the businesses that are already in there. So now they've encroached on my part, property and my neighbor's property and railroad easements for parking. So I don't know what your liberal idea of parking is, if it's taking over my land, the railroad's land and my neighbor's land. To already suffice what they don't, they need that already. How are you going to add a couple more? People that are working at the shelter or this educational facility that is going to need all these educators, um. They don't have enough parking already that I'm been in contact with the police for the last three days. Having a property dispute because somebody keeps trying to rent out my land to C S O.
And their tenants.
So, uh, and, and I don't, you know, if I can speak to the educational part of this, this thing, I'm a homeless advocate. Anyone, the mayor knows I'm a homeless advocate. A lot of police chief knows I'm a homeless advocate. And, um, I'm not against the homeless at, at, at all. It's just, I believe that this business, the human rights violation wasn't followed up on correctly. Now they're having, um, what's the?
MCAD.
MCAD's actually got an investigation that they are in violation, like they took it up. So like, I don't think that this is educational facility because. I know the people that live there and I absolutely know for a fact that there's no educational plan there. These people are going to say. They have an educational plan there, but I don't know how you can say that's education when. You don't have anything in place when you came to the last human rights commission meeting and you're begging for volunteers because you don't even have enough people. Staff, what programs you have now to help people get like the services they need. You literally admitted to this town. Into other entities in town that you don't have the staffing. You don't. So how are you an educational facility? If you can't even provide the education you're talking about so much so that you're reaching out and asking us for money and volunteers.
All right, thank you.
I don't know.
And I actually currently have their handbook and their crisis center pamphlet. Because the crisis emergency center is in there in, uh, the one arch place.
And I'm a client also of C S O and Bridge Primary. So I know that building indoors and out and Bridge Primary is on the same floor as this proposed project and that's.
Violates the building code.
That also violates the building code. So I don't, I don't even know why we're here at this point. And you say, oh, did we do our due diligence? I beg to differ, like to ask you guys if you really did your due diligence.
And I'd like a hard look.
Yeah, I would really like a hard look.
Okay, anything else that you want to add to your, uh, I, I'd like to give the other side a chance to talk as well.
Um, well, I have so much. I mean, I.
Yeah, we have to enter this all into evidence.
If, 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 if I would be allowed to enter all of what I have here into evidence. And be allowed to do that within a timeframe, if, if, if necessary.
So you have, you have physical document, you have documents.
Well, yeah, because the next step we would de-dent all this in for, or you guys would never hear it or no court would ever hear it.
But they relate to the general things that you've been saying, correct?
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, all to that.
Yes.
You can, you can enter that into the record. Somehow we'll get a copy of it or whatever. Just note.
I know how to use a copy machine. You guys will pay for the paper.
The ink, the ink. We got the paper.
Yeah, I'll bring the papers.
Okay.
Um.
It, it, so I, I, I think I understand that. The biggest concern you have is that the, uh, the change of use is, uh, affecting the, the, the ground and the, uh, and this, and the infrastructure, sewer, water. Uh, flooding and parking. Those are things that you think have been materially changed by this project coming to you.
And it's going to be operating a twenty four hour business, a business.
Twenty four seven.
It was never operating. There was never anyone that lived in there. Uh, it's definitely a major change of use.
It's significant. It's different in kind.
We all know that homeless shelters, if you can drive by the Wells Street Shelter that they're operating now. I've actually, I'm, I'm going to say this into the record because I don't care because I, I really am like, I, I'm for. When I slipped up and used crack cocaine a couple of years ago, I bought it from a client that lived at their homeless shelter. So I know they don't. And I bought it right in the adjacent parking lot of the abandoned building right next to it. That they let hang out there because no one can test it. And that's where I bought it. And he went back inside, grabbed his crack. Came out and sold it to me. So public safety, all that's into play too. And see their facility is actually particularly.
Detrimental to our public.
My actually safety of relapse. So I don't know how they're an educational facility to help people get off drugs because. When I tried to help people there, when I had a bad day, I ended up falling into using it.
So Stephanie, let's.
I, I don't even like putting myself up there. That's very.
Okay. So Stephanie, let me ask you this as a, as a finishing touch. Um. Let's assume that they come before us with a special permit request. And we grant the special permit. What, what, what general conditions would you put on them? Uh, would you want the board to place on them at this time?
They would never make me feel safe. I would never be able to feel safe in my home again. I would feel invaded. I would, I would not enjoy my own home. Uh, we, we go to bat for, for. You know, the candle factories and the Jim's Tree Service and the application of law is so different on everybody. It's, it's, it's.
I wish, I was, I really wish I was sitting in here and the town's lawyer had the powers case up and was just pushing them for the three prong.
I mean, I loved your explanation when you did it for Marion Griswold. And if you would like to argue that as to why you can deny this on every single perspective.
We've done the homework.
We've done the homework for you.
We've got a whole room full.
I got every LLC and every association of every single thing they've ever been involved in.
They're awarding themselves their own contracts hidden through LLCs from the government. Like there's crazy stuff going on with.
Sounds like you would not be satisfied with any condition.
Any residential.
Ever in perpetuity.
If there was a special permit hearing, you would.
I would come and object to it too, and I would probably bring it.
Deny that, you'd want the board to deny the permit.
That is a relief. I am seeking to deny any occupancy of that building.
You can't claim a hardship because you made your own hardship of not having a contingency.
Create your own hardship and then call, oh, we're under undue hardship. No, you created that problem. You have two and a half years to address this issue. You, I, I'll offer one oh one months in street. I'm sure the rent is a heck of a lot cheaper for forty five. Units while they're constructing because that's what they're saying. You don't put in all that. You don't put in all that money into that and you don't renovate and add bathrooms and kitchens and all stuff for something that's supposed to last sixteen months.
And, and I won't name anyone, but somebody from their organization has already said there is plans. Cause in this, this town talk, that it's going to be permanent for respite. And so if you guys even do grant this, I would really consider really strict guidelines that it doesn't become the same type of use.
Never have occupancy again.
Keep going on with it after sixteen months. A hundred dollar fine to them to a company making this much money.
How about, how about four or five hundred to each individual in my precinct impacted by what crimes happen currently because of the shelter and, and the lack of staffing.
But i- it's just really, it, it's sad that we have to fight this hard when I seen you guys fight for people smelling candles. Like out of control. I, I literally put my hand inside my planters out front and I'm pulling out Suboxin stuff from their Suboxin clinic. It says their name. You're like, I, I could look up, dig up barcodes on them. I could do all this and it would tell me who got it and where it was from. Like I, I just, it, it sucks to live down there.
Four hundred and sixty-eight, all in a two year span to their, to their shelter.
That's one call every two days at all hours of the night. I'm going to have police in my backyard like i- it's a big difference.
It's going to impact not only us.
Did you tell them we're in a flood plain?
Yeah. Not only that, is it going to impact us on a private nuisance, it's going to really affect it as a public nuisance as well.
Gathered from the flood plain and like, I called Danny Laterno yesterday, the chief of staff. The ex-chief of staff of town asked her about the fur caught max and things that she did with the waterways. And she was the one that directed me in the area to let me know that we are designated somewhat a flood plain now. I don't know the legal terminology, but that's like how far I've gone into this. And she's not my best friend. I would call her my frenemy. But I, that's, I even had to reach out to her to get this type of information. This has been like, we've been going nuts trying not to have this. And then I've been fighting with the guy about parking. He's taking my line down and putting it on the ground. I'm calling the cops and for the last three days, that's what I've been doing. Sitting out on my back porch, waiting for the guy to come take the line down so I can put it back up because Dr. Singer wants to park in my backyard with his dog parking in his car. And that's the email I sent you earlier. And was, i- i- the car was sitting there. He leaves his dog in the car and it just sits there and barks at my cats on my back porch the whole time, all day.
And it's the zoning board of appeals job to not increase more problems and, and, and endorse more non-conformities that are already there.
Yeah. It, it's just because you can put a skyscraper here, doesn't mean you should put a skyscraper here, here and here. Like that's what they're kind of saying, like just because we can do it. I thought it was you guys' job to be like, that's probably not good for this area.
And under, and under forty B, if that's the route they'd like to take.
Yeah. We don't meet the threshold.
We already meet fifteen percent.
Yeah.
The ten percent threshold, uh, the government wants to push it in. You, we've already exceeded the ten percent requirement.
That's why we asked.
That was the housing meeting last week. That was fifteen percent. I know we've met it. What the city needs is actual single family housing, permanent housing solutions, not temporary shelters. And if you look at the CPC funds, then you can see that, that even from the former mayor, the letter to C S O also stated that they wanted to see more permanent solution for the housing.
Okay. Thank you.
But we can enter this all at the record. So again, we'll be done here.
Just one more thing. Um, I, should I answer seven ten or would you like me to answer that directly to you?
No, you can, please, if you have an answer, if seven ten, you have an answer.
I said, um, seven ten D, A Chapman Street is the highest traffic use. B, second floor shares office space with Bridge Primary Care Medical Office. C, clean slate Bridge Primary C S O Mental Health Christ Services by reasonable people would be considered medical facilities by definition. Although residential us, uh, uses are allowed by right, the other businesses do not comply with the parking, the rights of way and cannot be used. Um, not to be, and other businesses parking requirements shall not be exempt from the whole project. If, if you have to consider the parking uses that are currently there that are encroaching upon my property. It does not comply with the site plan review requirements of two hundred dash eight point four, two hundred dash eight point three. Uh, any, uh, if the primary use is a medical facility, um, that would also uh required, would have required a special permit. Um, and the purpose of the uh zoning is to lessen the congestion in street, conserve the health, to secure from, to secure safety from fire, flood, pan, flood, panic and other dangers, to provide adequate light and air to prevent overcrowding of land, to avoid undue concentration of population density, to encourage housing for persons of all income levels, which our, our whole area is already low income. You're increasing the density. My house is a HUD property. Um, and, and I have uh legal obligations to my E H L P loan that would restrict my house being uh low income. Um. To encourage housing for purposes of all income levels to facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water, water supply, drainage, sewage, parks, schools, open space and other public requirements to conserve the value of land. And I, I would argue that if you put a homeless temporary shelter with forty-five people that who knows where they come from because it's not required to be sober. You don't have to be sober. You come as you are. It's self-guided. You, you'll hear it. Um, conserve the value of land and buildings, including conserva, including conservation of natural resources and the prevention of blight and pollution to the environment, to encourage the most appropriate use of land through the city, including considerations and recommendations, recommendations of the master plan, which I also think needs to be revamped. The strategic planning goals and the policies adopted by the planning board and the comprehensive plan, the regional planning agency. And you're supposed to, if there's not an or we follow the Massachusetts general laws, it's a and we follow the most restrictive provisions to protect all of this for us. Abandonment, which I had issued. I, I really need to read all of this. This is all part of uh zoning article one purpose authority, two hundred dash one point one to.
Okay.
The whole code. I, I literally could go through every single violation that from permitting process to opening and non-closing to to uh applying for permits under guises of other things. Not fully uh estimating the valuation of the work that they're doing from, from start to finish. It's a mess. And every single thing I can enter into evidence. So i- if you, I, I'll ask for a chance to rebut anything that they may present. And I, and I'll defer to their, to their attorney right now.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Peter, let's call the C S O people up. Thank you, both of you, Ryan and Stephanie.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Uh, Sam Prickett on behalf of C S O.
What was your last name?
Prickett. P R I C K E T T.
Sam, what's your name? Are, are you an attorney, sir? Are you a?
I am. Yes.
Thank you. Please, please proceed.
Uh, I believe the, the notice we received was asking some questions about Dover amendment and uh the, the educational use and these premises that uh, am I correct? And that's what you want me to speak to?
I'd like you to begin speaking to, but to that, yes, then we'll get to the site plan. But uh, please start with that.
Okay. Uh, with regards to uh question A, what is the education, educationalistic use or goal for the temporary shelter at Art Street? Uh, you know, in one, I guess, long sentence, uh, the facility is to provide assistance to those in need in greenfield and surrounding community with programs intended to educate rehabilitate with a primary focus on teaching life skills uh necessary to productive independent members of society. Uh, this is a this is a goal that's been found by the Massachusetts courts to be an educational purpose under the Dover amendment uh like time and time again. I have a few copies of McLean Hospital versus the town of Lincoln that uh, I mean, I can, I can read all quote, but I can also just, you know, present it to the board if they would like to review.
So attorney Prickett, let me, let me just cut to the chase a little bit. I, I'm gonna, let's assume for purposes of where you are now that the, that the board understands the criteria for the Dover amendment. I think that in reviewing these kinds of things, uh, things, we, we need a lot, we need factual information, not just generalized statements of what you're going to do there. Um, even though those tests are there, you do have to show us specifically what educational things you're going to do there. And I would really like to hear specifically what's going on in that site that you consider educational under the statute and the cases. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, as far as specifics, and I mean, if we want to get more specific than this list I have, then I.
Yeah, like, like, give me a, give me a day in the life of the home shelter, homeless shelter, a week in the life of the homeless shelter and how you're going to quote, educate people that are there.
It, it might be better answered directly by uh members of C S O rather than myself, the legal, legal side of things.
Sure. Gotcha.
Hi, thank you. Uh, I'm Karen Jefferies and the president and CEO at Financial Support Options. Um. The, the program there does uh essentially from the, the time individuals wake up until the time they go to sleep, there is uh educational support for individuals. We're teaching them uh daily living skills. We are teaching them job seeking skills, um, basic education support, nutritional support. Um, we do a lot of work around independent living skills and household management skills. The goal obviously is for individuals to be there as short a period of time as possible and learn the skills so that they can maintain independence in the community so that they don't have to experience homelessness again, so that they can go into permanent um living situations. We provide education and support around self-care, um, including how to manage their own medications, uh, control their own medication, medical conditions. So we have a lot of individuals who need to learn how to manage uh things like diabetes, diabetes side effects, um hypertension. We also provide supportive and um services and mental health um education and support. There's group education activities, um, including recovery, psychoeducational supports, um enrichment activities like music, art, writing, um, to help cope with things. Um, we also do education on resource navigation, including how to apply for and maintain public benefits, the housing process um and other benefits such as food and nutritional support. And there's individuals staff who work um.
Pardon us.
Excuse me.
Yeah, we need to address this.
Yeah. No one was, no one was interfering with your presentation. Could you give them the respect they deserve? Okay. No one bothered you. Give them, give them their present, present.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is she speaking about six art street? I just, I want to know if she's speaking about the occupation or.
Stephanie, Stephanie, please, Ryan and Stephanie, you've, nobody interrupted you. You'll get your chance to comment.
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear her. That's all.
If you can hear, you can ask for her to speak up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, see what, could you tell us what um six art street, that's what you're talking, you provide there?
The Greenfield Shelter. Yes.
I wish you could, uh, give me an example. So I'm a person at the shelter and, you know, I wake up in the morning. Give me an example of how specific, as specific as possible, how these educational uh procedures are administered to people. Is it, is it just because I'm there? I'm going to learn because I watch people do things that I don't know how to do, or am I literally taken out of bed in the morning and go, and go to certain workshops or certain things that are, you know, David, you need to learn these skills that we're going to see if you know these skills tomorrow. We're going to see if you know them better the next day. How, how does it work?
So it's a combination of individual support of, um, it could be a, a nurse educator who's meeting one-on-one with a staff person. It could be a case manager educator um who's meeting one-on-one. And then there are also some group activities. So people have the ability to choose whether they want individual, whether they want to do some of the group activities. Um, it's really, it, it depends on, on what the issues are, what the individuals' needs are. Um, but it's a combination of the two.
Were these things listed in the application that you submitted uh to the city?
I defer to our attorney on that.
There's a lot of that.
As specific as she just said, anything close to that, was there anything in the application that said we uh, we are uh an educational facility because we're going to do the following? Not just a general statement, but filed the, like, is it in the application representing to the city that these are the things that are going to be done?
I don't believe it was that specific. No.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So um, you're saying to us that you meet the test of the Dover amendment because of this, the specific types of educational procedures that you have built into the homeless shelter that you just expressed. So that's your, that's your discussion on the Dover amendment. Do you have anything else to add to the, to that discussion or do, or is that, will that suffice for you?
Um, I, I suppose with respect to the application, I'm just, I'm kind of thinking like chicken or the egg here. I mean, I think that C S O put in the application what they thought they had to put in the application because they thought it was for site plan view. And they were not indicated otherwise that it required more information at the time. They'd be happy to have provided it. I mean, it's not, it's not something they were trying to withhold at any point. I mean, if they applied to the city and the city came back and said, this needs a special permit or we need more information, they would have supplied it. I mean, we're at a point where they, they applied and were approved. And we're hearing an appeal, but you know, what they, what they could have, you know, they, they would have done whatever the city asked for approval, but they did what the asking got approved.
I hear that, but in my experience, when you're presenting yourself to a city and you're looking for an exception and you know that the law is pretty specific about how that exception works, it probably behooves you as the applicant to um make sure that the application passes the test regardless of the feedback. The it's not the city's responsibility to tell you how to make an application or to tell you how the zoning works. It's up to you to hire people like yourself and then submit an application that defends why you have the right to be there as a matter of right. So um, I don't agree with you on the fact that that's how things proceeded. Um, be that as it may, you didn't do it. So that's something that we'll note in when we decide what to do. How about the um, the, the second part is section seven point one O, which says as a matter of right, it appears that you could have a residential and business or commercial use together. Um, yet I don't see really anywhere in any of the literature that you chose that section to hang your hat on. Is that, is that true? Or do you want to speak to the, that section at all? What, what, what are your thoughts about seven ten?
Um, well, we weren't directed to come up with answers for seven ten. We were just directed to come up with answers for the Dover amendment for the focus of this hearing. Uh, but again, I mean, that, that kind of speaks to the last thing that you were talking about is that they didn't necessarily think they needed the Dover amendment to get zoning approval here. They thought that they were applying under seven ten, a matter of right. So they did so. It was, you know, the Dover amendment was all, you know, a piece, a piece there that would allow them at seven ten, didn't allow them to, right? It wasn't, you know, what they were trying to hang their hat on in the first place.
You have no zoning analysis to present to us about why you think that as a matter of right, C S O would go under there in there as, as under seven point one O?
Uh, not at this time. That was not requested of us.
Well, it was requested of you yesterday. So if you need more time, I would be happy to have you submit something that uh, or not. If you think, if you want to, if you want, if you feel that the Dover amendment is where you want to stand on uh, on the issue of whether you have a, a, a right to be, uh, uh, the um, the project can go in as a matter of right, that's up to you. You're the applicant. I'm not going to tell you what to do. But it seemed to me in a, a, a plain reading of the section that that was a possible other way in which a C S O could uh argue that they had, that they, that they could be there as a matter of right. That's up to you. Uh, you, you do as you see fit. But so if you have anything to say about that, then let's move on to.
We are, uh, we're happy to submit something.
Yep.
Uh, but I, I do disagree that we were asked to do so tonight. The only questions that we were presented with were questions about the Dover.
Oh, can.
No, there's a question here about seven point one O, what, what you thought about that as a uh, but regardless, that's fine. You didn't have a lot of time. I, I, I get it. Um.
I apologize. I thought that was directed to uh the applicant, it was too.
Oh, it's directed to, everybody's got to kind of answer the same questions. Okay. So let's go, let's go to site plan review, which I think is really where the applicant has the most concerns. Um. Eric, I guess I want to ask you a question. When there is site plan review of this type, isn't the site plan review sort of a, um, a um, site plan of the entire site? And not just the construction part of the, of the, you know, it shouldn't the whole, shouldn't we have had an aerial view of one arch place with parking and where water and sewer connect and things of that nature?
Um, typically, yes, but in this case, they indicated when they were making the application that there would be no exterior change to the building or the site itself. Or the site itself. And as you know, off-street parking in the central commercial district is now required. So there was no need for a site plan overall.
And that decision was made by you or, or them?
A combination, actually. They, they submitted the information and I thought that was complete enough with the explanation that there would be no. Changes to the exterior of the building or the site.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
Please.
Eric, when they came in, it was the, the plumbing work and drainage work was there, it was associated with the internal workings of the. Facility to make the resident renovations. What, what would, there, there's refer, reference to work being done outside. Is that a separate project or contract that has nothing to do with? Work inside?
It may be related, uh, but it has nothing to do with planning board's review of the site plan.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to understand. Yeah, those, those are separate activities.
Separate activities, yes.
So whatever's going outside is separate to what they're.
Yes.
Because we're trying to, somehow they're getting blended together. I'm trying to understand that. Whatever's being done outside is a separate contractor, separate work activity for what's being done internally.
That is correct.
Gave the presentation, that's what you were presenting.
Can I just ask a clarification question? So, um. The site plan review included the section of building that they're modifying. They're modifying it inside. And they're adding bedrooms, kitchen, bathrooms. So in that process, were, were there sewer plans listed and how that would tie into it? And was that, was that part reviewed?
As part of all site plan review applications, as per the zoning ordinance, section two hundred eight point four. Key departments are transmitted a copy of all application materials submitted to the department.
And that would be, that would.
And that includes. The respective buildings, the Department of Public Works, the Fire Department, the Fire Prevention Officer, the Health Department. And when applicable, the Commission on Disability Access.
Okay, and so all, so everyone got, so and. Everyone had the opportunity to look through those things and submit any concerns or problems that they saw.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Eric, um, you've heard what, uh, Stephanie and Ryan have alleged is going on out there in terms of wet floodplains and. And water runoff and, and increases into the system. Would tho- would those be the kinds of things that the engineering department and the DPW would look at and review in a project like this?
I would say yes.
Okay, and in this case, the sign-off was kind of a check-the-box sign-off. There was no listing of issues with. Comments about whether they passed or didn't pass?
All comments received back was in the form of no issue or comments from all key departments.
Okay. Any other questions from, uh, well, can you, uh, I, I, can, can you explain, maybe you're, maybe you're not able to. What, what was going on with the building before you came in for the site plan review? What was the need for trenching and all those things? What, was there something going on with the building that regardless of your application for the homeless shelter required, uh, work? Or what was, what was going on there?
Yeah, we sprinkled the entire building. So when we, um, purchased the building in two thousand and twelve. Um, it had not been sprinkled, it was grandfathered in. We sprinkled the entire building.
And, and to do that.
Completely separate from anything that's gonna happen in the shelter. We needed to do that in the, in the entire building, uh, regardless what the use for.
So that's independent, that's independent of the special permit request?
Correct.
And then, do you know, do you know, um, what you have to do in order to, what you have to do in order to upgrade the sprinklers? What kind of infrastructure work did you have to do, including to the public property that was around you?
So I will clarify, there were no sprinklers in that building, so we were installing sprinklers for, for safety.
Yeah.
I defer to George and Joanne who know the technical terms for the process.
Yeah, um. My name is George Dole. I'm a project manager with Jones Wits and Architects in Greenfield. We've worked with CSO for several years. Um. They have been requested to, um, over the years to, uh, the building has needed to have sprinklers put in it. And we've coordinated with the city of Greenfield at various times and. CSO was coordinated with, uh, warehouse mechanical in their engineering department. To develop a sprinkler plan for the entire building, including the Sherwin-Williams portion of the building, so the entire building will, will be sprinkled. And that work was permitted, I believe, back last year in twenty twenty-three. Independent of any of the work related to the shelters, basically, the temporary shelter at the second floor. And one of the requirements for sprinklers is for the entire building to be sprinkled, which is being done.
Can you, can you help us understand what specifically you did out there? You know, like, did you dig a trench? Why did you dig a trench? Where'd the trench go?
There was a need for, for water connections to the city. There's city lines, um, throughout the streets of Greenfield and there's. Um, a series of buildings around, some have sprinklers, some do not. And, um, warehouse mechanical coordinated directly with. The city of Greenfield's EPW and other, um, parties. To determine the size of the water supply needed for sprinkler water at the entire one-arched building, six-arched place. And developed a, uh, engineering plan for that work. And then proceeded to apply for a permit which was received. And moved forward with the work to put in the fire sprinklers for safety throughout the whole building. And that was what was being worked, being done back, I believe, in November, December to put in some of that piping.
Did you have options of where you could have tied in the water line, or did you have, or did you have only one option?
Uh, my understanding is that warehouse mechanical, who, who we were not involved with, but we've worked with before, but on this project. They had to coordinate directly with the city of Greenfield's DPW and the Water Department. Um, to determine where the proper lines to attach to were, where the proper clearances were on property lines. And where risers would come up in buildings, so both the. City EPW as well as the Fire Department would have been input onto how that sprinkler system was laid out and ultimately installed.
Did you learn after you began construction that there were any physical problems with the installation?
Um, none that we're aware of with the project. I believe everything's been done per code and per, um, requirements and. It's, it's been put in place, primarily done.
Okay. All right, um, is there anything else, anything from the board?
Yeah, just one question. You, you own the entire building?
We do.
I didn't realize that.
We originally rented the space and then we purchased it.
All the, this, all the businesses, they're either rent or lease space from you.
Correct.
Okay.
Dave, I got a question.
Yes, Jim, please.
Uh, how much staff will be going on as this stuff goes through? Nighttime.
Just in this one locate, in the, for the shelter, um, it's usually. Four people or so during the day shift and then two, two per shift. So. About four people during the day, two people on the second shift and two people on the overnight shift.
So you're only talking about four parking spaces being used up?
Yeah.
And the, your clients will not be driving cars and I assume they'll be.
We have that experience that they have cars, so one of those people.
Thank you.
I did not say that.
Um, can I, Eric, or, or Chair, could I say one more thing in terms of, uh, just the building code? In terms of, uh, the use of the project, as, as Karen noted, um, there'll be, you know, approximately four staff. And up to forty-five clients at the space. It encompasses an overall area of about eight count and square feet, which. Under the previous use of the business where there was business uses in there, would it housed up to eighty people? That, that has, has a use, including vehicles for a large number of those people who worked in, in that as a business use, live in the space.
So the, the space that left was the, um, employment board. So they, they had, you know, anywhere between thirty and fifty employees every day. Um, and then all the people that were coming and going, you know, the guests and the people who use that. So they moved out, which is why the space is vacant. And which is why we were looking at that space as a potential temporary, uh, use for this project, but, uh, far less traffic from what.
Was there? Okay.
Uh, just, just dove feeling into that real quick, um, if I could ask, you know, how, how you would like, uh. A report on the compliance with the zoning as a matter of right that was requested previously?
I would, I. I'm sorry.
Go ahead. It, I'm sorry, David, go ahead.
Um, well, I, you know, just a, I, I, I need a list. I, I really need a factual list, a representation of what you're going to do there, as specific as possible. That you believe passes the test for educational use. So I'll leave it to you as the attorney to guide your client, knowing that we're looking for more than just a bare representation. And what you're doing in there is not just having people sleep there, but you're doing more and you're performing under your, uh. Educational, uh, purpose, uh, in your, uh, charter. The second.
We will do so. I, I, oh, I'm sorry, I think you were.
No, please, I, I, you, you, that's fine. I'm moving on, so if you, if this is a thought, go ahead.
Oh, it was, uh, the, the questions about, uh, zoning. The central commercial districts, just like the compliance of the matter of right, that we didn't have something prepared for. You had asked us to prepare something for you. Would you like that transmitted as well with that report?
Yes, I, I'm, I'm gonna leave it up to you. It's your, it, you're, you're, you're trying to convince us that you're there, that you should be there as a matter of right. Um, this, that, that's our job is to, that the appeal is basically that the applicant says that you are not. If you wanna just hang your hat on the Dover Amendment, then I'm saying that I need a much more specific explanation of what you're doing there. If you wanna belt and suspenders it, spender it like, you know, like I would hope that you would, then I would wanna see a, uh. An explanation of how seven ten applies as well. That would give us another. Place to look, uh, if members of the board, you know, have differences of opinion about the, the powers test. So I think it would behoove you to do that and you, that, that would, it would be really helpful to us if you did.
I, I agree, just, uh, just format-wise, timeline-wise, you know, to whom should I send it? Just to everybody on the board? A memorandum?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't. Go ahead, Debbie. I'm sorry, I can't see you talking, sorry.
Oh, sure. I, I have a couple of questions. Um. The four people who, um, work there during the day. What, like, what job functions do, do they fill? Are there like, you know, are there two nurses, two teachers? Is there, what is your mix?
Yep, it's a case managers, uh, and nursing staff, director's staff. Um. That's pretty much it.
And all of those people, do all of those people provide education?
Either one of.
Are they certified in any way to be educators?
They're certified in their field. Yes, they're RMs or they're.
No, I, I'm just, I'm just, yeah, I, I know very little about the process, so I didn't know if you guys were required to, if you were going to. Say, do a program on X, Y, or Z that you actually have some sort of certification that, yes, I've, I've trained and teach in.
No, that's not applicable to this type of, uh, activity.
Okay, and, um. What, you know, are, is, the, are all the residents required to attend a certain amount of educational programs?
No.
So you could, I could go there, I could stay and not be educated if I refuse to do so.
I, yes, okay, thank you.
I'll ask a question on, on that. Uh. I, I'm certainly under the impression that the vast majority of people who stay at the shelter. Leave during the day and then come back the evening to stay overnight and then leave the next morning. What percentage of people actually who are staying there actually stay for these educational programs you offer?
So the current shelter that we're in on Wells Street doesn't have, um, really the resource center. Space, so I think we experienced more people leaving during the day. Part of the goal of this temporary shelter is to ensure that the resource center is folded into the, the programming of every single day, so, um. I mean, I. We can lay up for, where we do have the resources.
Yeah, I'm probably. I'm probably having a nice rest from the shelter and housing for CSO. And, uh, I, I would say that it fluctuates certainly when the people are staying during the day and evening. Uh, I would say at least half of the people who are staying in the shelter are here at some point throughout the day. I will also just add that this is twenty-four hour programming, so we are. Our case managers are working one-on-one with individuals. We do assessments when people first come into shelter to sort of. Evaluate basically what, what are the barriers to this person being housed effectively? What is going to help them to remove those barriers? Where are the areas that they need to develop for further incompetence needs? And then we are both providing resources within our shelter space. From individuals who worked there and also bringing outside just like this. Part of our work is to connect people so that they don't need the shelter all the time. You know, we're, we're trying to encourage people to engage with community health center. We bring in community health center, we talk about. How to manage your own medical. And how to, you know, think about making sure that you're engaging with the PCP and maybe not using. Um, nine-on-one necessarily as a PCP and, you know, reducing. The use of hospitalization in that way. We're, we have nurses on site that work throughout the week, um, with our guests and. Understand, you know, the, the needs of individual guests there. They help them to sort of figure out how to manage their own medications, so that when they move on. They're able to do that in their own housing, um, resources. We, we do group settings, we bring in budgeting, we are, you know, working with actually local banks, um, to do that with us. So here is expertise in our staff, but we're also bringing in the expertise outside.
And it's all, it's not all limited to just daytime, so as hell aside, we'll do a lot of times, because some individuals can't be there during the day, we can do this programming. In the evening, um, on weekends, so it's trying to wrap it around as much as possible.
Thank you.
Um, Chair. Would, would it be possible to add one more note about the seven ten of the zoning?
Who's that? Who's, I can't see from here.
This is, uh, again, George Dole from Jones Wits and Architects.
George, yes, yes, please, go ahead.
I just wanted to touch base regarding that and let you know, um, let the zoning board of appeals know that. Um, CSO and Jones Wits and Architects. Were mostly coordinating throughout this process at the development of the idea of having the temporary shelter at one arch pain to fruition. We both, we worked with both Mark Snow and Eric Torog in reviewing both the building code requirements and the zoning requirements. Including the, um, seven ten, um. Uh, clarification where the second floor in central commercial is allowed to be residential with business below. So that was our understanding, uh, when we talked about belt and suspenders of what we had done for research on. The zoning and, um. Building code requirements as it related to the temporary shelter at the second floor in addition to the, the Dover Amendment. So our initial review was that it met. The residential aspect and shelter use to meet the building code and the zoning code of the city of Greenfield.
So are you saying that you made a determination that seven point one oh? Was, was relevant and was supportive of them going in there as a matter of right?
Correct, and we did that determination with review in person and. The, uh, email with both, um, the city of Greenfield Building Department as well as the city of Greenfield. Zoning Department, so that we were coordinating with them as the project moved forward towards the permit.
But, but do you believe that right now, if you needed to advocate for seven point one oh, you could give our board? An explanation of why seven point one oh works and, and would allow them to go in there in the alternative, uh, as a matter of right? Do you wanna do that right now?
I, I could, but I would actually prefer that Eric Torog is the zoning, um, coordinator for the city of Greenfield. Who's been with the city of Greenfield for many years and is duly aware of the zoning requirements.
I, I'm, I'm gonna beg, I'm gonna beg to differ with you. While we are really lucky to have Eric. As our planner, and I'm sure he worked vigilantly and diligently with you. It's up to the applicant to present their case, not for the board, not for the planner to decide for you.
That, that's totally appropriate, that's fine. So I do not have the, uh, the zoning, um. Book in front of me right now. But I believe, as you noted, seven ten point A or B, is that correct?
Seven point one oh.
Seven point one oh.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
George, when you were, when you were doing this work between Eric and the building inspector, I would take that information as what you used to go before. With your site plan review.
Correct.
To approve, so by the time you got there, that preliminary work was done and, and the site plan review was approved based on all that work.
Correct.
Just wanted to clear the process.
Yes, and that clearly stated this, the seven point one point. The seven point one point oh stated that in in this zoned area, Central Commercial, um. The uh second floors may be used for residential.
And if you needed to do that again, you could do that for us.
Yes.
My other business occupies the second floor, I'm sorry, he's lying.
Brian, Brian, stop, Brian, Brian.
I'll leave for a little bit, I'll leave for a little bit, because I can't sit here and listen to fucking lies. Second floor bridge primary, I go there, it's here.
Brian, leave, thank you.
Bye. Yeah, sorry for the interruption.
We we can and we will do so in the report that was requested.
Because I think that would satisfy at least the procedural reasons, you can just reiterate that.
Again, like like we had like we had said, the. The site plan went in with the understanding that it complied based upon all the conversations and it was approved, so we. Had the understanding that it did comply based upon both our reading and City Street.
Yeah, and I guess.
And we'll articulate that in the report.
And I guess I want to clarify it, and you know, David, let me know if I'm misspeaking here, so everybody understands is. You know, you did, you you did, you you did your planning, you did your thing, you you said. Went for the planning board, everything was approved, and then people have the right to appeal that. And so we have somebody who appealed that decision just for everybody's benefit, that's what we're discussing is whether or not all of that was done. As it should be, and there are other considerations, so. Um it's not a question about what C S O does or what they, you know, whether that use should be allowed there or not, it's just a question of, okay. We don't feel that this was done correctly, so that's what we're discussing. And that's why we're asking all those specific is we're asking everybody in very specific and. Looking for specific answers, so we can have a better understanding of making sure everything was done correctly.
I I again, I would like to defend uh our planner uh in this way. He's there to help, and I'm sure he did an excellent job and worked very hard in trying to help you, but the applicant really has to defend themselves because. The board doesn't know, Eric doesn't know if people are going to disagree and they're going to appeal it like they did now, it's not Eric's job to defend. The app, the uh C S O, it's only Eric's job to help facilitate, answer questions, give you guidance. So it's a it's a caution, it's a word to the wise for any applicants out there. That if you think that it's a complicated um endeavor, and it's really up to you to hire your own experts and come in. Uh knowing that you can defend your reasons for why the zoning should be determined uh for your benefit. So what's happened here, that there's a disagreement, and so now we're here on an appeal, okay, thank you, yes, Peter.
I'd like to add that that same comment for Eric would also apply to Mark Stone, the building official. They're providing consultants support.
Yes.
And then it goes to C S O, then they take it from there, so. So they, whatever recommendations they make, it's still your responsibility to implement that help.
Yeah, okay. Um, anything else from C S O?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you, um, thank you very much. Appreciate it, um, Peter, we got a lot to read into the record, huh?
Yeah, and then before we before we close this, Stephanie has a question.
I I would like to just respond to some of the things that they've said, if that would be uh.
Stephanie, that would be fine, please come up to the chair and uh you'll be given the opportunity to speak.
She's in that, I don't know, I don't. I'm not sure we would need to be read everything into record, I I think that's 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 just an insane. Yeah, I I I think we can say.
I'm just gonna.
Put into the record all the documents of support.
Well, to indicate that it's the following, they're positive and the other ones that are.
Yeah.
It was the name, so people know that that we could submit it to the record.
Yeah, I mean, that that's good, I would not want to have anyone have to read all of that.
Thank you.
Okay, Stephanie, please, please.
Okay.
Be focused, please be brief, as brief as possible, thank you.
So I I heard the list of uh departments that the um. Decide approval plan uh process contacts and but I but I wanted to just. Uh uh he omitted conservation commission, so I just wanted to add that that is also. One of the departments that needs to be uh contacted and have um. And that person would also have knowledge, I think, about pamphlets and educational brochures at. You know, twenty Sanderson Street, but I wouldn't call that a school either. Um unless you have certified teachers there that are, you know, working twenty four seven to provide something, you know, some educational about. You know, maybe how to keep using drugs, because that's what's happening. Um, the building that was purchased, uh uh uh, correct me if I'm wrong, in twenty twelve. Was that what was entered into the record? Um, so eleven years, they were grandfathered in for sprinklers. Or not having sprinklers for the current uses that they have in that building. Um, so I would say that occupancy, regardless of whether or not it's temporary or permanent. Once you do that kind of alteration above the the, I believe it was five thousand feet, but. Or square feet, but you know, it it that I'll look up if I if I'm wrong on that one. That I think was a significant alteration, when you're adding all the bathrooms, you're adding all the kitchens and everything, and I think that they have not done their due diligence, nor has. Joe, the representative for uh J W A. Um, I happen to pull a former survey of. That particular lot. Um, that was pulled by Chapman Court, this is also deed record, so that I don't, I mean, people can just have it. Plan book ninety, page forty nine, this was filed up. As you can clearly see. Here is one arch place. Here's the railroad easement, the right of way to the Boston and Main Railroad, there delineates how many feet they own. I had a member of the railroad come out. And he had delineated and I um. His name is Rich Brier, for the record. Um, he works out of the Springfield office for um. C R X or C S X, uh the railroad company that bought P and M. Um, they recently had to do their own surveys about the land that they own, because the railroad doesn't want to give up any of their land for nothing. And I don't think they want to have their liability when there's no fencing, there's no uh guards that that prevent anybody from walking up on that railroad. They are not sitting here in this room, so I I doubt that they were also notified properly. They didn't, I I didn't receive certified mail, my neighbors didn't receive certified mail, I'm assuming nobody receives certified mail. But if that's, if they did, then I I had requested that, so I'm hoping in a a response to that, so. They had um made me aware that, in fact, every parking space that is not abutting that building. Is in violation and encroachment of the railroad right of way. So none of the parking that goes all the way. And anything that's grandfathered in, I'm sure that once you start doing a certain amount of alteration to a building or a site or um. I think we made the argument with the whole library thing, but whatever. That um it brings it to a level that you need to go and do a little bit more looking as to what you're doing in that place. Because this deed, this survey and my deed meets inbound, they all indicate. That the parking spaces that they're currently using are on railroad right of way and my and my na- direct neighbor's property. So I will always maintain that they don't even have enough parking, regardless of whether or not I have four more people showing up. That's four less parking spaces they even have, because they don't have enough parking for the current uses. And I don't think that bringing in the forty five bed shelter would be called a principal use of that building. They had submitted a, uh I have the building permit list, which is again, all public record. Um, uh by public record request, and if if it would suffice, I will I will submit all of them, or you could filter all the public records request by my name. Um, on January third, they had applied to do some exterior work. Um, they are doing exterior work on that building right now, and they have left two sheets of.
Stephanie.
Siding, so I'm I'm saying that. Uh, they don't have the teachers. Uh, if if they call someone a teacher, well, I can call myself a doctor, but it doesn't mean it's true.
Stephanie, they, on some levels, the building's already there, they have a right to make improvements to the property and ask for building permits that has nothing to do with us. So um I'm I'm appreciative of what you're saying by way of example of things that are going on out there. But we're only going to look at the things that uh involve the change of use, so um.
But I caution, but I caution the city that you cannot approve a plan that breaks any other law.
Well, we we'll have to, we'll have to dig in deep and with your help and all your documents, we'll dig in deep to see if the law has in fact been broken, so we'll, that's part of.
So are they trying to transfer what they say is a use at another site to that? Current uh site, because. It says suspected duration of use of space for that is sixteen months.
I don't want to speak for them and they can correct me, but my understanding is that while the shelter on Well Street is under construction. People will have to be displaced and they'll be displaced to arch place. For the same period of time as the construction, which they estimate to be sixteen months. So the site plan, as far as I know, and it was agreed to and not appealed by C S O. Um, they have agreed to a sixteen month temporary shelter, so even. The worst case scenario that you're looking at, if we decide that everything has been proper, is that they'll be in there for sixteen months, so.
So will they be removing the significant things that would impact our water and infrastructure and sewer at the time, would they stop using them or?
Those are, I, those are good questions.
Those are permanent, those are permanent um, uh those are permanent uses within that building that actually do in in. Impact what we have now.
All your questions are good, I don't know the answer, the board doesn't know the answer, we're going to need some time to figure out. What's going on there, you've illuminated us, that's that's why you're here. But we can't, you know, you've made, you've uh, you've given us a lot of information, you've made your position clear. Um, I think we understand what it is that you're concerned about, and um so we thank you very much.
Uh, can I have one more? Just one more question, because I I was looking at the building permit that very specifically. Um, has a checklist that's on the city website about what the process is, so in the defense of also Mark and Eric. They have the same list, the checklist they're supposed to go through, and they sign under penalties of perjury that the information that they're providing is correct. So if they if they told Mark and Eric something. And it wasn't necessarily correct, and they're saying, okay, well, I got six projects happening in that neighborhood, fifteen Arch Street and the pot shops and the mug pot shops and skate park and whatever, and the other building, so. I would imagine they took the word of C S O to forward with their their approvals.
I understand that you're making that assumption, um, I would make a different assumption, but both of us making assumptions isn't going to help us find what really happened, so let's just leave it that.
All I know is due diligence, not done almost.
Okay, I hear, I hear.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so uh before we get to the public, um, I heard you and Debbie uh talking about how to manage the um. The correspondence, what do you think, uh, Mr. Clerk?
I'd suggest we list all the correspondence as being put in the record, I can identify those that are in favor. And those that aren't in favor of the the appeal.
Okay, uh.
If I read them, it'd take probably an hour and a half to read all of them.
That's fine, Eric, is there a place online uh in in the in the website? That we could post all these letters, so if people want to read them, um, they could go into our into the town website and find them.
Yes, I could do that.
Adder them and just throw them in a pile, yeah, what would that be?
I could uh scan them and put them on the Department of Planning and Development's webpage off the website.
So you would, if we went into that place on the website. And we, where would we, would we see something that was titled correspondence for the May thirtieth hearing, something like that?
But uh what I can do is actually put it on the zoning Board of Appeals webpage of the web of the website, and I'll make it clear with the title and what it is.
Okay, so anybody out there listening to this, and if you have here, if if you talk to other people. Uh, all those letters that we received, all the correspondence will be on that on the website, go to the zoning board. And you'll see an obvious reference, okay, um, so. Peter, you're not going to read any of them, you're what you're gonna, is there a tally of, my answer, can you summarize?
Yeah.
Uh, what, it seemed like people were in some categories, is there a way to summarize that?
Give a name and just speak with both of them. With that side, there are nineteen support and four against, and uh support ones are for first. We we received one letter from Stone Soup Cafe suggesting and supporting it pretty strongly. We have also one from Patricia. O'Neil, again, providing that expressing her support for the. For the for the project. Dial slash self youth and community service, again, strongly suggested it's a good good fit for the facility. Or John at John at Tarralt, again, this is an email that says uh from. Community Action Pioneer Valley, again, supporting the project. We've got one from Louise Amiat. Again, attention from the neighbor, building of checking to use of, so almost destruction and positive recommendation. And if there's anyone to hear who I'm calling out a name, feel free if you want to add to, might just quickly going through, feel free. Again, there's one from Nikki Garrett, and sent to the Bosoni Board of Appeal, supporting the project. Uh, one to David Singer, this is from. Adrian Nunez, again, a positive recommendation for the project. Getting from Gina, Giovanni, again, supporting the project, this is H R A support for temporary shelter. Uh, the Oakley Task Force, we are pleased to write to Center of Support for Critical Service. Then these fees are over the past several weeks that they've come in. And from the the David Singer from Carol Westland, again, that's a positive support for. Again, from Robert Williford, you know. I'm worried about the upcoming challenge to the temporary use of the space. More than constructed, I hope this is just misunderstanding, but this one is. It has a question about the project, but doesn't, just wants a clarification. From Alan Vander Velden, again, this is a, I am in favor of supporting the project. Susan Orga Flick. I'm writing my, for you for to you for myself, us, supporting the housing project, it's the temporary use. Emily Green, I am ready to express my support for the project, and these are dated from April to just during this week. From Julius Atkins, again, I'm ready to support the project. Wendy Goodman, and I'm writing to express my support for the short term use of the facility. With the. Rock Aurora Backer, Aurora Barker. Again, a positive recommendation. Amy and Doug Clark, I would like to add our voices to the many others supporting. Use. Again, for to. J C Ma- Maher, I'm ready to express my support for the project. As you can see, there's a number of these that are in positive support of it. Again, that's not away communications director, I have, we oppose the proposal for the temporary housing shelter. One from Jennifer Hoffman, M P H, then she has her letter in in non-supporting the project. And the final one is from Stephanie Du Close, not support project.
Uh, Eric, have we received anything today that we might want to add to the list or we're all set?
The list is complete, it's German.
Thank you, all right, uh.
And these are all, these are all part of the public record, we'll put it on the posting.
Peter, can you open it up to the public?
Yes. It suits the eight oh five, we'll open it up to public, anyone have any comments, questions, objections, recommendations? There is somebody else. Identify yourself to where you live.
Hi, my name is Pamela Goodwin, I live at the Weldon.
That should be good.
I'm previously a homeless person, so I've had experience living in a shelter. Um, I just want to say that I attended the Human Rights Commission. When C S O was here, when people came in who had filed a grievance with the Human Rights Commission. Um, just so people know, it is a, the Well Street Shelter is a low barrier model. It's called harm harm reduction, some people call it the vet shelter. And um. I testified during that time, and so did a colleague of mine who can't come tonight because of health issues, he had been in the shelter. Um, and his name is Bob. So I have just a couple of comments. I remember that on December eleventh, when I attended that Human Rights Commission. It was stated that there were two case managers for forty to forty five residents. That was stated by some C S O people, um. I think what I heard tonight was that only at the will of the resident, they are being educated or framed or whatever you want to call it, or getting assistance. Because they are allowing people to continue using drugs or alcohol, because that's the idea. They're not homeless. They're unhoused. They're they have a safe place to be. I understand that. Um, if they get to decide whether they want to be educated, I'll use that term lightly because I was an educator for thirty-six years. Um, I think many times they're not going to be in the mood to be told how to take their medication or what they need to do. As you had stated earlier, I apologize. I don't know your name.
Oh, that's okay. I'm Debbie.
Hi Debbie, I do believe that they have to be gone a lot. And that's one of my concerns. When they say they're going to educate them in the new place. Um, and people asked about, are you certified as an educator? Are you certified as a nurse? Obviously, a a nurse has to have their credentials. So I kind of dispute the fact that it's not a change of use. You know, if you're not educating them when they're out and if you have one case manager that's trying to get them hooked into SNAP and do what's called mass hire and find a job if that's able to do that and get them to their medical appointments. It's understaffed, woefully understaffed. If they're going to hire a whole lot of people and change the use, then I see that as a huge change of use. And so far tonight, just listening, I am unimpressed um how it's supposed to work. And I have been at few zoning board meetings. I'm a member of Housing Greenfield. I have been for almost five years. I think some people are going to be very unhappy that I am opposed to what's going on because it feels like the cart was put before the horse, in my opinion, based on the facts that I have heard, based on things being okayed by different departments that maybe it shouldn't have been that okayed at that point in time. I'm not a a professional contractor, but when there's stuff going on that affects the neighborhood, that concerns me. And so I do care about safety. I care about parking. I care that the railroad tracks has their own property. And I care when there's an infrastructure problem that's been created and it's probably going to continue being created. I don't see a way out of that at this point in time. To me, I think there could be other options where people could be housed and that there was possibly never a really good chance to check out other places that might have also worked without causing the chaos or the confusion or the safety issues on Chapman Street at Arch. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Eric, I just just call Michelle. Michelle.
Hi, it's Michelle Losdorfsky, Arch Street in Greenfield. Um, I have more of a question. And I know it's probably been hammered on already, but by increasing the number of toilets in the kitchens, how is that not going to have an issue on our sewer infrastructure? I mean, we had the big huge water main break however many years ago, and that was like the whole state. So I don't know or how to, you know, how is that not going to affect our infrastructure in our neighborhood?
Thank you. Oh, go ahead, sir.
Oh, a question than anything. That doesn't need to be answered, but I'm just putting it out there.
It it's it's an important question. Um, I think it echoes what um what Stephanie is asking the board as well. So thank you.
Mister Chair.
Yes, sir.
George, could you help address that?
Um, basically, um, we have, you know, per per the code requirements, we have showers for up to uh forty-five crimes um per the code. Um, showers and sinks and toilets. Um, again, um, it's in a building that had had up to eighty-one it with public toilets in it. Uh, and and that space did. So there's there's more use of of uh of twenty-four hours, but um, you know, there's a limit to how often someone is using a shower or using a toilet. Um, this the septic system and the sewer waistlines there are designed to be able to handle those levels. You know, whether or not there's any issues with overall structure of uh, you know, pipes within the city of Greenfield, the the pipes are designed both to supply enough water and to take enough way enough waste waste treated treatable treatable water.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, please. Your name and all just.
My name's Jerry Loves.
Um, I'm a resident of Biden. Um, I'm also the Chair of the Executive Board of the Franklin Regional Planning Board, the Cott. Um, I am an activist with the the task force and with Housing Greenfields and a number, well, not Housing Greenfield, but uh three other housing groups in the area. I wanted to speak to the issue of uh the importance of this being what's called a low barrier facility. We have other facilities uh for housing facilities for folks who are struggling with substance disorder in the town. Uh, there's the Green Beach or Sage Group on under Gamma. There's a men's house, a women's house. There's uh the house on Conway Street. Um, but those are all sober. Okay. Um, so a person's using their they're not permitted, so they're they're thrown out. Uh, if they violate that restriction. I I am advocating for this low barrier approach because with with folks who are homeless, whether or not they're struggling with substance use disorder. Um, they any barrier whatsoever having to do with either using or the fact that they have um health, other health issues are to keep them away from getting help. And I I I really count on Greenfield, the town of Green City in Greenfield, to step up like we've done in the past here. Um, when it came time to talk with Tapestry about setting up a uh a strange exchange, there was a debate, blah, blah, blah. It worked out um that um Tapestry was permitted to go ahead. And it's been wonderful in terms of of providing the support that was badly needed that we did not have before. In fact, mind you, jumped on the on the Van Wyken just after that. Other places have as well. I mention this because my my own family is affected very strict, very, very importantly by substance use disorders. Uh, I have a daughter who has been homeless for two and almost a half years. Two and a half years. She did not use the shelter very often because we found a way to get her a car. So where she lived, she lived in the car. And it was when the the car failed uh that she ended up uh not being able to find any place to live. Uh, so she was basically I won't go into the details, but swapping uh her body for 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 space, right? Well, transaction sense. And that's a very, very, very difficult thing to admit, but listen, folks, it's reality. And that's the kind of of desperation that people will go to to find a place to be safe, to be out of the weather. And I think I am absolutely totally one hundred percent uh supporting this effort by C S O. It is so overdue for our area. Um, look around, look around. Same same is true in the other counties. Hampshire, Franklin, Berkshire. Uh, last thing I'll mention is the the Franklin County Point in Time Count, which is of course a federally uh required count of the homeless folks every year, not on the winter. This year pointed out that in twenty twenty-four, we had two hundred and fifty-four folks in the county homeless. Two hundred and fifty-four. Part of that has gone up because of the Haitian immigrants brought in. But it is also true that uh individuals as well. So there's a huge need and I'm I'm really proud of the city of Greenfield. I mean, really proud that you folks are on the ball with this, and I hope that you grant this effort so that we can do a better job for our homeless folks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay, we'll close the public comment.
Oh, I. That's reading.
I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Yes. And Mayor, you want to speak?
Right.
I'll let you go first.
Uh, hello, my name is. Oh, Junior, you're speaking. She can go.
No, I saw Cindy Costerman had her hand up before me.
Yeah, I'll catch her after after this. It's severe.
Uh, hi, my name is Wahab Minhas. I live on Davis Street. Um, I'm here on the capacity as a elected representative. I am a councillor at large in Greenfield. And I'm coming to speak here because multiple constituents uh have expressed their support for the concerns that Stephanie and her partner also have. Um, I would just like to give some background as to my interactions with C S O, the clients who reside there. Um, I operate local family businesses in the in in the town of Greenfield for a number of years. Um, one of them being a convenience store, which is frequented by many of the residents who actually live there. So in the daytime, when they're saying, hey, they leave in the daytime, they're coming to places like myself to buy smokes, buy Arizonas, buy Little Debbie's, to buy a pack of chips. They're doing that. So I have constant interaction and they're they're my main customers. I have constant interaction with those people. So I see them and I know them for years. Um, I see them when they're not doing not doing so well. I see them when they are doing a little bit better. And uh, so that's kind of the background. Uh additionally, soon after as after I was elected this past November, in January, one of my customers um who was living at C S O uh at at that C S O shelter came to me and was like, hey, kid, uh, I'm having some troubles at the shelter. Uh, can you, you're, he doesn't quite know the intricacies of local government. And uh, I don't know if I do either yet. But um he said, hey, can you do, can you help me out with something? And I was like, well, what's going on? And it was like, I think I'm going to be kicked out of the shelter at that time when he reached out. Um, he was like, I'm living there with my brother, was a um disabled vet. And I am his primary care provider, have been so for many years. Now, mind you, these people obviously are at the shelter when they are probably at one of the lowest points in their lives. They are dealing with a host of issues. Mental health, substance abuse, domestic violence, a a a host of other issues. So they're not in their best shape that they've ever been in life. So they come to me and uh and he said, I think I'm going to be kicked out. And I was like, why is that? What'd you do? And uh, he said, well, you know, I had some complaints about the quality of life and care that my brother was receiving. His brother is on a host of medication. And I said, what? But did you file some paperwork? Did you, you know, did you make some formal complaints? And he's like, yeah, I did. And I'm now being harassed and targeted for doing so. And it seems like as if I'm going to be kicked out. I said, well, that didn't seem right. This is an organization that is, you know, helping, you know, either not. You know, they're not causing harm. What do you mean? Uh, a few weeks go by and he comes back in and he says, uh, well, yeah, guess what? It's happened. I was like, what do you mean, first what's happened? So, yeah, I'm living in my car now. No longer there. He said, there there was an incident where I was making a complaint about something. And there we had a verbal argument. And they kicked me out. And I was just shocked. I was like, what? Hey, like this is somebody who is not a statistic to me. This is somebody who is not just an anecdote like like he is to you right now, but somebody who came into my shop every every day to get the cheapest drink possible because that's all he can afford, but he comes in multiple times a day. And I was shocked by that. And uh, he said, hey, is there something you can do? And I was like, look, I'll look into it. I just got elected. I don't I don't know the process. I don't know what I can do. Um, and so I tried to reach around, I, you know, try to pull up my magnifying glass and I'm like, hey, what are what departments does this relate to? What can we actually do? And uh, we managed to get them a hearing at the Human Rights Commission. And essentially, what that did was that was a platform to be like, okay, these are the things that are happening, right? And at this point, weeks have passed by. And first with the, I hope he's okay with, I mean, well, he's testified publicly. But Chris is not the only one who's come to me saying, hey, you, these are the discrepancies that are happening at the shelter. This is what they say they're being going to provide. This is what they're getting federal funding, state funding and city funding to provide versus what is actually happening. So photographic evidence of their food, lack of sanitation, a lack of actual support and resources when it comes to job training, state finding, state housing, all these things, mental health support. And so I have been receiving this, right? But in an informal manner through tax and, you know, people coming and talking to me while I'm at the register selling Snickers, bars and aerosol. And uh, so I said, let's bring this to the Human Rights Commission. Get to the Human Rights Commission that, you know, uh, they say what they have to, and I testify on their behalf. There's a bunch of them, they can't. They don't have time. They're dealing with a bunch of other stuff and they don't want to come to a public body. I was elected to do so. Again, which I'm doing today. So I said, okay, yeah, let's uh we raised all the issues, after which we decided, the Human Rights Commission decided that what we're going to have is an investigation in the form of a walkthrough of the C S O shelter. Uh, myself, the Chair of the Human Rights Commission and the Mayor went in and uh, what we thought was going to be, what I thought was going to be, them answering the questions as to, hey, you say you're doing this, what is it that you're doing? Because I'm getting conflicting uh evidence. Not providing a hot breakfast, not providing adequate meals, not providing sanitation. They certainly are not providing adequate and enough casework. Certainly not providing adequate and enough mental health support. And that is the reason why everything seems so vain. Their answers to I, and this is not a, oh, homeless people are bad. Let's stop, let's external, that's that's the that that's the strong man argument. The argument that I'd like to present today is that multiple constituents have come up to me and said, hey, they are not doing their job. They are getting funding to do so. They're not doing, many people who are in there, right, who are working in that shelter in Greenfield and in that organization must have good hearts because they've chosen this way of life to help people at their worst part in time. Right? But the organization is getting funding to do so. A lot of funding to do so. Our tax dollars are going to this. And by our taxes, I don't just mean the federal budget. I mean, this specific city's budget has set aside dollars for them multiple months. And when I see my constituents come to me and say, hey, I'm not even getting a hot breakfast. What the hell is going on? It concerns me. It concerns me that not only are they there, they're they're they have subpar conditions in a specific place, and that they are expanding. And then on top of that expansion, they are moving into a temporary shelter. Right? Which, you know, ask any businessman, ask any rational person who's ever dealt with permits and all of these things. You don't spend hundreds and thousands of dollars to renovate a place and just abandon it. You will continue to use. So that's not going to be, we all know that. But the point being, they're not doing their job. And that is what I I that is my take, that is my concern. They are not doing their job. And who is the one, what department is the one that is supposed to tell them? Supposed to actually do a checks and balances on you're saying, so all these things that they say, oh, we're providing uh nutritional support. Who is supposed to say, okay, we don't just take your word for it because I, as an elected representative, have evidence, photographic evidence, anecdotal evidence of people who have come up to me and showed me, it's not true. And then when I went to the shelter, it's not true. I could not find a real schedule of any of their educational uh uh educational programs. I could not find a itinerary which said on Wednesdays, we have job support. We have we have job seeking at this time. And these are the slots, and this is what's happened in the past. These are the amount of res- residents who have signed up for this. And these are the slots, and this is what's happened in the past, is that these are the amount of res- residents who have signed up for this in the past. And this is how we try to increase that enrollment. Oh, this is the certificate, we tried to, I don't know, like, we, we're not stupid, I've been through college, I mean, many of us are educated, y- y- you know, even if, and I was a tutor for a while. Even if something simple as building a resume, right, and you have a course on that. How many times a week does that happen? How many times a month does that happen? Who teaches it? You will not find those specifics, because those specifics do not exist. Those programs do not exist. And what, you were right. They wake up, and for the most part, they leave and do what is that they need to do, and then they come back and they sleep. So this is not a my concern is that a organization which is providing subpar care is being let off the hook because, well, a lot of us do not have interaction with the homeless, we are concerned about the housing prices, we are concerned about our homeless population. And so we just see them as a savior. And then we can, you know, just sit back, relax, and be like, okay, something is being done. I would like something to be done, but it's like, you know, there's, there's a saying, I, I, I don't know if I can translate it well in English, but it's like, you see maggots in your food, you can't eat it. I see it right there. I, I can't. You know, if I didn't know there were maggots in food, I'd be eating that, I'd be eating it up. But I see it upon close inspection. And multiple people, people come up to me and show me, hey, this is what an average meal looks like. Hey, this is what a day looks like. There is no set schedule for the educational facilities that they're saying that they're providing. There's no such thing. There's no curriculum. There is no curriculum, because they would have presented it to you right here. And said, this is, we are an educational facility, and that's the permit that we pull for this temporary shelter. Th- this is our itinerary. We meet on Wednesdays at this time for this specific cause. This is how many people met last Wednesday, or two weeks ago, or last month, or la- or the six months ago. No such thing exists. And so essentially, what is happening is that people are being brought there. They do not get adequate support, they're just being provided a bed. And I would argue they're not being provided enough nutritional care as well. I have seen the meals, and dear God, I've lived in poverty, it is absolutely invisible.
Can we?
The serial bar is not adequate.
We try to wrap it up a little bit, I think you're doing a good job, but, um, the hour is growing late, thank you.
Yes, yes, I, I absolutely understand, and thank you for, you know, holding this forum. But I would like to just say, it is our job to implement the law, to follow the law, and equally as important, because we live in a democracy, to listen to our constituents, listen and follow and carry out the will of the people whom we actually serve. That is the spirit of democracy. And so I am here on behalf of people who have lived in the shelter, people who have been kicked out in the middle of winter. One of the coldest months in, 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 in.
Please, please.
And, and to say that this facility is not doing its job.
Okay, I got it.
And we need, need further introspection into them. Thank you, thank you, thank.
Sandy?
Sandy Kosterman?
Sandy Kosterman?
Okay, Sandy could come back. Mayor, do you want to speak?
I, I just wanted, this has been a fascinating meeting, I wanted to say, I do, I actually do support CSO and the work that they have been doing, I I am so grateful that they are there and taking care of people when when there's no place else for them to go, and I don't think that we're working on the shelter on Well Street, I don't see another place that people could have gone except over to Arch Street. And at the same time, I totally believe that we should have done a special permit on this. I think it was a big change of views, I said that, I was in office for three days, when I actually said that, I said it to, uh, a couple of people, and I think that that's the place that it has to go, and I think that there's a process that we have to follow, and we should follow it for everyone, but I do want to emphasize that I am grateful for the work that they do, we have far too many homeless, and we need a place for them to be. But one process should apply to all, and, and thank you to the zoning board and to everyone that spoke tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, if you have any, um, you don't have to answer this now, but if you have any insight into why you think they require, as a matter of law, a special permit, I'd be happy to take a, either a memo from you, or a memo from someone who can give me that opinion. You've stated several times that you think they should, that they require a special permit. I, I can't seem to see exactly how that's the case, but I'm open to hearing, uh, still, um, from you and anyone else that could show the board why that would be the case. I know you, I know you wish that they would have a special permit, but that's not our job.
Hmm.
So, again, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, you, you have time, you can enter things into the record later, um, and so, but I, I having you say that, while I appreciate it, is not, doesn't help us overcome, um, seven ten and the Dover Amendment. We need, I need more, I need more than just a, a, a broad brush, uh, opinion that that's the case.
All right, I was told, I'm just gonna quickly rebut, I, uh, heard that it was, um, multifamilies, multifamily. And I don't think this, I've spent five or six years on this, the planning board, I don't think it meets the definition of multifamily.
But it's, they're not coming as multifamily, they're coming in, uh, as a residential use under seven point one oh, so can you speak to that provision?
No, I, I actually could not speak to that without opening up a book, so I will put something in writing.
Okay, thank you. Sandy, are you done, Mayor? I'm going to give you all the time.
I'm all done.
Okay.
Sandy Kosterman? Sandy listening bunny transfer? Yes, ma'am.
All right. Anyone else?
There was somebody else, sure.
Yeah, please, anyone who wants to speak, come on up.
David Agrestis. Your name and address.
My name is Maria Byrd. I live on Goff Field Street in Greenfield. And I just came from feeding a hundred and thirty meals, community meals. The number has grown exponentially. So I do need just a little bit, for, because I don't think any one of you know me up in this board, except maybe Mr. Turk. Um, I used to be a police officer many years ago, forty years of law enforcement. I had a lot of interaction with folks who are struggling with drugs. And, and I know the need, and I know what these folks are trying to do. But I am, I'm here, two things, you brought up something that was very, that actually made me want to come in and speak. Um, the fact that they will come and go and not necessarily use whatever educational um, stuff that they're going to, uh, offer. I also want to back up Councilor Wahab. Because I also work with directly with these folks out there who tell me the same story, not knowing, I mean, that we knew each other in the first place. But that's why I supported him when he decided to, um, in work for, I mean, run for a councillor. Everyone is trying to do what is right here. But please consider everything that everyone has said. I'm not here, I'm, you know, everybody also knows that Stephanie is my, is my daughter. And I, um, uh, I hear her side and her concern about all the money that's going get, is going to, um, affect of our city. Anyways, I know you heard enough, but I just wanted to give you firsthand knowledge of things that have happened in this community for forty years, because I work specifically with that with that community. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, I, I, again, for those who are watching, either, either live or at home, we are not, we are not, this, this hearing is not about whether we're going to provide CSO a, a special permit or not, or permission or not to go forward. This hearing is about whether or not CSO followed the proper procedures to get into our system and to get the approvals that they, uh, might need to go forward with their project. So what we're looking at is whether they have a right to be there under our zoning laws that we legislated and the state of Commonwealth of Massachusetts under forty eight, section three, whether they have a right to be there because they're an educational facility, doesn't mean they have to run a classroom to be an educational facility. And, or whether or not they're there as a matter of right under a more mundane section of the code seven point one oh. So we would have to determine that first. Once we make that determination, I think that before us is also the site plan review. And in, um, listening to Stephanie's testimony and Ryan's testimony and others, I have to, have to, I think there's more exploration that the board needs to do to understand just exactly what is going on out at that site physically. I don't think the site plan before us gives us enough information. And so I think, I think in that spot, that's a place for us to explore, because if we feel that the site plan review was not done adequately, then we could send, e- even if we were to decide that they have, uh, that they have the right to go there as a matter of right, we could send it back to the planning board for another site plan review process. I'm not saying we will, but I think that's kind of what I'm hearing from what's going on here. I'm, I'm alone in my thinking. We have all of us to decide, so board, I think we're done for tonight, unless anybody else wants to proceed with a conversation, uh, is, is Gordon Quinn there?
Yes.
Gordon, is there, is there anything you'd like to, uh, recommend that we do at this point?
Um, hello, I think, I'm sorry, please just make sure this is even. Um, yeah, I mean, I think, I think you might articulate, I think everyone is articulating what the issues are and what the, what should be considered. Um, I think what needs to happen is, right now, there's been a lot of documents entered into the record here. But, uh, I know Ms. Duplessis entered in a lot of documents, I think. There, uh, rather than obviously reaching a decision tonight, I think there needs to be an opportunity to review those documents, uh, and compare them with the arguments that have been raised with the zoning ordinance. And, uh, and decide, no, I think decide, perhaps schedule another meeting at some point within the time, uh, the time constraints, uh, prescribed by the, the ordinance. And, um, and have a discussion, and review those, view all the evidence, and review the application of the Dover Amendment, whether that, you know, whether that, uh, uh, that, uh, is, has been, uh, uh, basically proven here, uh, and also take a look at the section seven ten, and also take a look at the actual site plan, uh, as you mentioned, and, uh, and, and determine, you know, does, does the site plan match up with all of those elements outlined in, in the relevant section of the ordinance? So, um, that would be my, that would be my advice to the board. Um, is to, you know, consider all the evidence and then schedule another meeting to review all, all that information. And then, and then reach a decision.
Anybody have any questions of Gordon, uh, Public Attorney Quinn? Okay, so, ahead, I'm sorry, Debbie, I can't see you easily.
May I ask you a question?
Oh, Sandy, oh, I'm sorry, Debbie, you, you want to say something?
No, Stephanie is asking if she can ask the question of, uh, I'm, I just, your mic, your name, just talk.
I, I will, I would, you can ask a question, I'm, but I'll leave it to Attorney Quinn to decide whether he wants to answer it, but please, ask your question.
I have more evidence than you have at the current, it was, it wouldn't download files, it's far too large to get to you. So I want to know what would be the best way to get you the remaining evidence that they are, they're going to allow me to enter into the record that I brought with me that may not have already gotten to you because of the, you know, twenty four hours of work. Um, would you, how would you like that presented to you?
I think, I thought, oh, yeah.
Whomever, because then we've been uh, we've been copying a human and everything, so.
Sure, well, I think, I, I'll certainly have access to the information you've provided today and all the evidence, just as I think I probably have the same access as, as, as citizens looking on the website, right? Um, because a lot of the evidence is going to be posted, I thought it was going to be posted.
All the letters and things that correspondence we received would be posted.
Okay, but not all the evidence, that would take them. Okay, okay, well, I, I, you know, basically, I assume you're going to be providing this evidence to the city officials, it'll get to me. Then, you know, you know, I'll make sure it, it does get to me, um.
Should the materials go to the city clerk? Should they go to Eric? Where should they go to be copied and posted?
In terms of, well, I think you probably could, I'm sorry.
God, he's a city clerk.
Suppose you could write, I mean, if the application for appeal was filed with the city clerk, I suppose you could file it with the city clerk, and then lie to myself and the other officials.
So that's, you, you understand that Stephanie would bring it to this?
I'll bring all the, all the data to be scanned, so that it can be publicly, uh.
Yeah, they'll, they'll either copy it or scan it, timestamp it, and then it'll be posted. She could send it over to Eric, and he can post it, and it'll get to Gordon and, uh, all of us. Good, okay.
Thank you.
David, can you hear me?
Who's that?
Sandy Kosterman.
Sandy, we've been waiting for you to speak.
Well, my browser wouldn't let me.
Okay, can you make it, can you make it brief, but we certainly.
I will make it very brief, um, this afternoon, I did submit, um, an email to both you and the city clerk, and I was alerted that the city clerk received it. So I'm not sure why it wasn't presented tonight. I did not hear my letter, my husband's letter read this evening, or our names mentioned, but please know that I have submitted it, so if you check your email, and if the city clerk would be so kind as to, um, submit it to the zoning board, I'd really appreciate it. Okay?
Thank you. We did receive it, we summarized, we summarized the, uh, we got a lot of letters, we summarized the letters, I don't know if your name was mentioned specifically, we did receive your letter. Your letter will be posted on the zoning board, uh, section of the City of Gretenfield website for everybody to see. And I'm sure that all of us on the board, I could speak for all of us, read your letter, and, uh, we thank you very much for that.
Thank you for letting me know, because, um, I did not hear our names mentioned.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Is that, is that Mark Snow's hand over there? Okay.
No, I think.
Um, so, we have, the thirteenth is going to be a really busy night, we have the other appeal, we have the marijuana.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Have we closed the public hearing portion of the?
I don't know, that's, I don't know whether I want to.
With no, I don't think anyone else needs to speak, so we're good to close it.
Yeah, just suggesting we do that.
Let's make it official.
Well, if, if you close it, that means there's no more.
Oh, I got it, got it, okay, sorry.
Yeah, I'd like to leave, I think we're going to leave it open, because we have CSO coming back, and maybe Stephanie might want to have some rebuttal, whatever, I, I, I don't, there's no need to close the public. Okay. We're not going to stop, I'd like to stop. I'd like to adjourn the meeting, uh, which then stops everything from happening, and, um, maybe we could, I know, I know we're, we're a busy board, but maybe, um, June twentieth, we would meet on this one?
At work.
Would that work for everyone? Anybody have a problem with that?
I'm Mike Pogba.
Okay, well, so what should, what do you, do you think you will, or do you know you will?
Well, if you give me about thirty more seconds, I can verify.
I'll give you thirty five seconds. Stephanie, with, in all due respect to you, is the twentieth work for you?
It does mean a lot.
I'm sorry.
We defer to the next, uh, scheduled zoning board meeting, I believe it's the.
The next scheduled meeting is the thirteenth, I'm, I'm suggesting we schedule it for the twentieth. I can, I can schedule it if I, if you can give me like, a, a real reason why you couldn't attend it, that would be fine. If you don't like the date, then I'm going to pick the twentieth as the date.
Could you remind me of the day of the week, please? It would be a Thursday.
We meet on Thursday evenings, it would be six, Thursday night.
Twenty fifth is a city council meeting, so many of us may not be able to.
No, the twentieth is, I'm sorry, no, the twentieth is a Thursday, you don't have a city council meeting.
It's because the nineteenth is a holiday.
The nineteenth is a holiday.
It's the next day.
Uh, so why do I need city councillors at this meeting?
Because my constituents are directly impacted by this, and they expect me to be here.
Well, I, I I don't know, you've made your pitch, I don't, as, as I said to you, we're not deciding whether CSO is good or bad, uh, we're deciding whether CSO has a, has a pathway to, uh, securing what they want to. Uh, we're deciding whether CSO has a, as a pathway to uh, securing what they want to get, and. So the fact that they may give a good service or a bad service, you've already testified, and, and that's in the record, but I'm not, I'm not going to change that meeting because there's a council meeting.
If it's relevant, I am available.
Unless the board, if the board, if. If the board wants to overrule me and thinks we should do it on the twenty seventh, but we have, we, we, we have to do this within a hundred days of our application, Eric, what would be the hundredth day of her application?
Um, her application was April third.
So we have to make a decision by the.
Yeah, early July, actually toward the end of July, so the July meeting.
All right, so do people, do people want to do this on the twentieth to uh, allow the um, uh, Councillors Bottomley? And uh, Wahab to come? Yes.
David, I feel like it's a slippery slope to start scheduling our meetings around the variety of other town boards and departments that exist, I mean, I think it's one thing. For a person filing the appeal to be available to attend the meeting, but I don't. I don't want to start scheduling all of our meetings trying to accommodate the entire city's municipal board structure, I'm, I'm not interested in doing that.
June twentieth works.
Okay, so can I make a motion that we, uh, we, we, that we, the, the public hearing remains open, but it will, it'll, it'll be stopped at this, whatever time it is, eight forty seven. And that it will be continued at six thirty on uh, June twentieth, uh, two thousand and twenty four, at this same site at the City Hall.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, quick question, Mr. Chair, is, since we're going to have that, will the various. CSO people, will have, they have presented the information that we need to have to conclude that meeting at that time?
I'm, I'm encouraging them to do that.
Yeah, it's just, it's just they need to know that, you know, but.
Okay, I'll make it, I'll be more. I, I, everything should be in as soon as possible, because it's very possible that on the twentieth, we will make a decision.
And the question was that's.
What's that?
Stephanie has a question.
Would, would I have time to review those documents?
Time to what?
Will I have time to review the responses, the evidence that they're presenting as well?
Yes, we'll post it, and you can look online.
Thank you.
Yes. Can I just ask another question, and I'm sorry, I know we're trying to wrap up here, but. Are we within our rights to ask that that, that, that information be provided by a specific date? Getting information on the nineteenth or the morning of the twentieth is not enough time for us as a board to review that information? I'd like to ask that anything that needs to be submitted, be submitted by the thirteenth, which gives us a week to receive it and review it.
Okay, let's amend the motion to say that. So, so we're going to have the hea- the, the hearing is continued, the date is the twentieth, and anything, any submittals have to be in by the thirteenth to be uh, properly considered for the twentieth.
Yes, I'll second that. Or make that proposal.
You can throw that. A- any, uh, anything else to be added to the motion? All right, all in favor, please say aye. Oh, did I get a second?
I'll second.
Uh, Jim, there you go.
He did, okay, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Let the record shows unanimous. Um, can I hear a motion to, unless people have anything else to say on the board, not from the audience, um.
Make the motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, yell aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Let the record shows unanimous, we're continued for this proceeding until June twentieth at six thirty, thank you.